We advise that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the Sunshine Law in the filing matter. Natives advertise in the Raleigh County Times and can be carried out on January 11, 2017, and posted on the Baltimore on the same date. Mr. Morell?
Here.
Mrs. Colletti?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Mr. Katrin?
Here. All right, so next, first we have some items on our action agenda, and this is Resolution 2017-88, adjusting the 2017 quarterly sewer bill for Block Nine, Lot Thirty-three, Burke and Burke Hunters Glen Apartments. Need a motion to approve?
So. Second, excuse me.
Mr. Morell?
Aye.
Mrs. Colletti?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Katrin?
Aye. So, next is Resolution 2017-89, and that is approving your Raffle License, three of them actually, 521, 522, and 523, for the Church of the Resurrection.
I'll make that motion.
Sir.
Mr. Morell?
Aye.
Mrs. Colletti?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Katrin?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-90, authorizing executive session to discuss the following items: CWA contract negotiations, DPA contract negotiations, litigation for fair share housing, and versus Delran Township.
Sure move.
Second.
Mr. Morell?
Aye.
Mrs. Colletti?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Katrin?
Aye. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the work session meeting on March 23rd.
Sure move.
Second.
Mr. Morell?
Aye.
Mrs. Colletti?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Katrin?
Aye. And finally, approval of the minutes of the public meeting on April 4th, 2017.
Sooner.
Second.
Mr. Morell?
Aye.
Mrs. Colletti?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Katrin?
Aye. Okay, so we have some housekeeping issues. First, the first item on the agenda has been removed. Snyder Electric was not able to attend this evening, and they will be attending at the next work session, and will have an opportunity to hear their presentation on that evening. So we'll go right to item number two, which is the Green Team's discussion on the ash tree issue, and, how are you?
Well, I wish I was good.
So before you get germs on anybody.
I don't know what Debbie had sent everybody. We have all.
For that, we have, just identify yourself.
All right, Al Park.
Right, okay, Al, thank you.
We have a problem in Delran, and we have all ash borders here. We haven't located any dead trees yet, but that's coming up. Within the next few months, we're going to get out and survey the township and find more of our ash trees. We have a list of some of them now. We haven't contacted our arborists yet to come look at a few. We have a few more we wanted to look at, but the problem with the ash trees is it will all be dead within 15 years, all of them. And according to what you've read, they are the most expensive tree to take down, simply because they shatter like an icicle. You can cut a tree down with a chainsaw, you can almost predict where it's going to fall. With an ash tree, it could snap anywhere above the saw cut, at the top of the tree, below the tree, go any direction. You cannot plan where an ash tree is going to go when it's dead. Therefore, we have to alert the township residents of this problem. They're going to either have to treat the trees, which is a very expensive thing, and that's a problem that has to be maintained, the rest of the tree's life. Very extensive in the beginning, and then there's a maintenance program every three Our problem is, we're going to have to remove ash trees that belong to the municipal. We're trying to, like I said, we're trying to locate those, more than now we have located a few. Once they become a risk, and a risk is anything that's defective and has a target, and the target being a house, car, electric lines, whatever, we're responsible. If it falls on a citizen that's sitting in a park or parked next to a tree that's the township's property, and it falls, we're going to be sued. We know that, I mean, we're the most litigious society in our, in the state and country probably. So we have to get the word out to the township that if they have an ash tree, or they think they have an ash tree, they can call us and try to determine if it's one. But if they have one, they're either going to have to treat it or take it down within the next few years. Because in about four years, they'll all be, most of them will be at the point where you won't be able to treat them, and they're just going to die.
Is because of this bug?
Because of this bug. It's throughout the state now. So, we have to draw up a, something for the newspaper and get the words out to our citizens. If we don't, and they find out we knew about it, their phones are going to ring off the hook. Any other questions?
Do they have the, have that in other surrounding towns to Delran?
Yes, it's in Sinemason, it's in West Hampton, East Hampton, it's here.
And they're taking action as well?
Yes. Yeah. Once they find out you have a bug, it's been here three years already.
Okay.
So, you have about five or six more years to treat your trees. After that, it's a waste of time. Is there anyone here that has treated their trees?
I know Tom did.
Yeah, there's a man, Tom.
Yeah.
But, Tom.
Tom.
It's an expensive treatment. It's $5, from what I understand, it's $5 an inch determined at rest size with a four and a half feet of the ground in diameter, so.
To treat it.
That's to treat it.
So if they treat it, does that guarantee that it lives, or just extends?
If they can get it in time, they're always guaranteed it'll live, if they get it in time.
So I know I have one of those, A, because on your map, on that cluster, at the bottom, that's kind of like my, it's all around my house, and I know that that's what was put in, in the front, and it sure looks like the picture that you show over here. The best-case scenario is decide if they're infected and cut them down before.
The best treatment for you would be to take them down. Now, we have a chance, when they're young.
And while it's not young, it's 40. So if that's, if that's, where it splinters, is that's after it's dead, or at any point?
It can splinter before it completely dies. That's one of the signs that you want to report.
Agreed.
If there's a splinter, and the chances are it's dead. What you want to do is, now that the leaves are starting to come out, you want to check your canopy, and see if there are leaves at the top of the tree. If you have a canopy that's starting to have a loss at the top, that's when you can tell.
Just to clarify, what Green Team's asking is, you're going to create a list of the trees, like the inventory?
We're going to try to inventory the township trees.
And this will, and then?
For the municipal part. You know, we can't go into your yard and say, "Look, you've got an ash tree, you've got to do something about it."
Well, you're saying that, you know, through public outreach, some type of public outreach?
Yes. If we can get the public involved and let them decide what they want to do, and we'll tell them flat out that you can wait, but if you wait, if you think the cost would have been prohibitive in the beginning, you haven't lived, you've seen that bill.
Now, if the tree is healthy, like Gary was saying, if it's a healthy tree without, and you still, like, maybe you prevented it, take it down, will it splinters then, or are you more likely to be able to take it down easier if it's perfectly healthy?
If it's perfectly healthy, and you want to take it down, now's the time to do it.
Yes, and it won't?
If it becomes defective.
That's when the?
If it's died, then it could fall any direction. It literally shatters like an icicle. And the treatment for that is they use a crane, or they use a protective bulldozer, because I've seen the films, it is not a pretty sight.
Was some of that information that was sent to us, is that like the gist of what you want included in the public?
Yes, if we can get that in the, in there, especially the ash tree identification, that'll be the biggest help. And then the managing your ash trees.
Thank you for doing this, this is so much.
And we'll, like I said, in the next week and months, we'll be going around and trying to determine where most of the ash trees are that the township has.
Jeff, that's like something that, we have an obligation to have employees do that type of stuff, can they do it?
We can do it.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is, you know, again, we're talking about litigation, you know, if something's missed, is there, like, what's the right procedure? Should they do it, or should we?
I mean, I think we have some information.
Inventorying it?
Yeah.
Inventorying?
Just inventorying our own trees?
Our own trees.
I think, do we have, do you have, you have a level, I mean, you sound like you got this pretty well in hand, but is there a level of expertise needed to properly identify, and if there's?
They're fairly easy to identify using this. I mean, it's, this is so.
What, can I just see that?
It's easy.
The bark is easy, because that's?
The easiest things are the leaves and the samaras. They look like little canoe paddles.
Do we have that one? I don't know, I don't see it.
Not as much information.
But it's here, you can see some of the leaves and the bark.
These are here. We have the big thing in that, but that is, is this kind of expanded version of that?
We have this too, managing.
Yes, there's some leaves here, and there's some.
These pictures are better. Where can we get these?
We're going to get more of them. We're going to try to have them for the STEM here, for the school. Sure, we can come to your house and look.
Put me on the schedule, please.
I mean, to answer your question, Mike, in addition to what they're going to do with arborists, we'll get the information to our employees. We have a couple of them that are involved in treating, and things like, and help identify the ones in municipalities' property.
And I assume the Green Team has a map of the township property that?
We have all this, we have all the township properties on a list, and then we'll try to go through some of them and find the ones that are at risk, the ones that are closest to things that if they were to fall, they would either hurt somebody, or kill somebody, or something. Anything else?
I think we're good. Al, thanks so much for coming out and putting the situation together for us.
The whole Green Team's.
We will figure out our approach to get the word out, and sure, between social media and regular media, we'll be able to get the word out. It is, but Sad Sea, I think that was, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't that the tree of choice for much of Temby Chase?
I honestly don't know.
I think all of, let's see, other tree out there, beach trees out there too. They, they, they're everywhere, the properties have a lot of those.
That's one of our biggest problems is when, when they develop communities, somebody said, "We're going to put so many of these trees in," and then 20, 30 years down the road, there could be a bug that'll kill all these trees. What the state's trying to do now is put in a rule where you can only have so many types of trees in an area. They don't want, they don't want you putting in one whole clump of ash trees over here, one whole thing of birch trees over here, because if you have that kind of problem, it looks like a blighted area if they were to die.
Right.
It's like the elm trees, when the trees went in the sewers.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thanks very much, Al.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so we'll keep this in mind, we'll start to put together a plan. So the next item on the agenda, I'd like to, I'd like to make some comments about this. First, we learned about the discrepancy in the sewer bills, I would say a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago at this point. And, just so that everyone is clear, the discrepancy was in that the ordinance calls for the month of January, the month of February, the month of March, the dates recorded as how much water was used in order to calculate the billing for the next year's sewer bill. Normally, that information was provided, frankly, as December 15th to March 15th, as New Jersey American Water doesn't bill the first of the month and the last of the month. And this year, they sent information that was January 15th to April 15th. So it was off by two weeks. It came, in essence, that the, it was, it was a different set of weeks. It was the same number of weeks and the same number of days, but a different set of weeks that led to a discrepancy in the bills, and most folks were either a little bit higher, actually, most of the folks were, 60-some percent of the folks were billed what they would have been billed anyway. Then a percentage were billed at a number that was higher than they would have normally been billed, and then there's a small percent, about 10 or 11 percent, somewhere in there, that were underbilled. What I'm suggesting at this point is, we have received the new data, Jeff is in the preliminary stages with the tax collector to get all those calculations absolutely right, and that we rebuild the whole town, and that approximately 90, 91 percent of the folks will have no impact or a lower bill, but there will be about 600 or 700 people that will get a higher bill. That's actually the bill that is accurate. Our job is to make sure that people are billed appropriately and not, and not make any accommodations that might be seen as arbitrary. We, that's a word that the lawyers love for us, not to be accused of being arbitrary. That's correct, you see that? So, Jeff has already begun to make this assessment, and he's working with the appropriate departments to get this correct. I don't have, I don't know that you have, Jeff, a time or a timeline for how long this will take, it's not the ordinary task that's happened. But I think for this council, which our job is to legislate, is to, perhaps rather than trying to change the wind, maybe we need to adjust the sale on this one, and change our ordinance instead of reading, you know, billing January, February, March, that if New Jersey American Water truly builds from January 15th to February 15th, that we need to have them coincide. So, I would ask maybe that our attorneys, or maybe Jeff, if you'd be the first filter on this, let's find out exactly from New Jersey American Water what their billing cycle is, let's get that terminology if we could, and then have our attorneys or you, whoever has to draft an ordinance to make this adjustment, so that we're in sync and this never happens again. Our apologies for folks with inconvenience. I would also suggest to council, and you'll have to agree with me or not, that obviously no penalties or interest would be charged to those folks who find that they owe a few more dollars than they were originally billed, especially those folks that went ahead and paid the year's bill.
Will you put a letter in with the re-billing, so that people will understand why they're?
Sure, and I'm sure we'll get plenty of notoriety between social media, and we'll put out a release when it's time to rebuild.
I have a question for legal. Have you reviewed the ordinance?
Specifically, I haven't read it, no.
Well, this is my concern moving forward, and actually, you know, the present suggestion is, it kind of goes right in hand in hand with this. This kind of is what the light, that, you know, there was an issue, and when I reviewed the ordinance, I'm not so sure that we're putting ourselves in the best position using that January 53 and all, the calculations for this year. And the reason I say that is, you know, in the ordinance, it says water usage for January 3rd and March, it doesn't say water readings from, or water bills from, it says for those months. And if we know that those December weeks, you know, even quote-unquote "the right way," or what we assumed was the right way when, you know, the township took control of this part of it, you know, when you have 600 or 700 people who will be affected, affected in a negative way, I don't know if legally we should consider just discarding that first month's bill into the calculation at all, if there's no way to determine what parts of that usage are from December, what parts are from January. That was kind of what I thought after reading the ordinance, and maybe, you know, legal opinion after the chance to review it would be appropriate.
I can take a review. My preliminary thought there would be, then we're two weeks short of the three months. So I don't know how that would affect the billing, if we'd be able to adjust for that, or what kind of considerations should be made.
Well, it wouldn't affect any of the, you know, and like Mr. Hatcher said, it wouldn't affect anyone who hasn't ever billed, because it's now based on usage during those months that would affect the overtime. I mean, it just, it's not what it says that we're going for, and I could be wrong, you know, you're determined, I may. I could be reading it as a layman and saying, "Well, it sounds pretty clear to me that this means it's water usage for these months," and the legal definition might be different. I just think that we don't want to put ourselves in harm's way.
Understood, I'll take a look at the ordinance.
So the difference was that what they, what they submitted to the township as the January, February, March bills were typically those that were billed for the two weeks prior to the beginning of January going forward. Now, they, what they delivered to us and what we delivered to the software folks for in preparation for billing was for a shift of one month, same number of weeks, same number of days, just a shift in that time. It was still usage January, February, and March, but it was, instead of two weeks in December ending in the middle of March, it was two weeks in January ending in the middle of April. So I think that the more salient point is that we may never get January, February, and March, so we need to adjust the ordinance in order to do that. As far as, as far as the legal opinion, we would certainly value that. I don't know whether precedent over the fact that it has apparently always been done the other way, since we've taken over the policy, the Sewage Authority took over the Sewer Department, and the way they were doing it in recent, in recent history. So there was a precedent as to what was being, how it was being, the data was being collected. And now, this one time, there was, it was, thanks, Al, it was done in a different way, inadvertently, and they sent what they thought we asked for, we received what we thought we asked for, and it went out, so.
And I agree there, I mean, this is something we sort of, and it would have been nice if all along that these things were reviewed and just kind of just brought us the light.
So this appears to be a one-time error, you know, in the way it was handled. I'd certainly like to get your legal opinion about, you know, whether this is going to create any problems or not. It's going back to the way it was before we correct it, with no penalties and no interest. So, take a look at it if you would, and let us know.
I will do that. And I think your suggestion of adjusting the ordinance to make the correction, that seems like the most practical solution.
Absolutely.
So, just a minute, it's going to have to be, that ordinance is going to have to be a written date lead, a little bit, because New Jersey American Water Company does not have the same dates for every house in the town. At one, you know, one part of the town will have a bill on the 15th, and another will have on the 16th. Another, actually, there's almost a five-day gap to do the whole town. I mean, it lines up the same number of days, but it'll have to be written in a manner that it accommodates that.
Understood. I'm thinking something about the bills would be used from?
The billing date for one?
Yeah, the billing date or the billing period covering.
Right. So, anybody else have any other questions about this? No, seeing all knows on the head shaking. We'll move on to number four, and this is, this is a request to use the courtroom for a macular degeneration seminar sponsored by the RAC. Do you want to talk about the, we don't have anyone here from the RAC that wants to talk about it. Seemed like a pretty, pretty interesting program that they were going to put together, and unless there are conflicts, anyone, Jeff or Jamie, other conflicts, or there are issues with this that we're not aware of?
Well, they haven't picked a date, it just said in June.
This doesn't get back to me to confirm the date, but it's an evening in June, I'm pretty sure it was a Wednesday, they were looking at a Wednesday evening, it was from 6:00, 8:00 p.m. They would probably get here about 5:00, and then, you know, end of the, the afternoon.
So it seems like, you know, when we, us and one has a disagreement, we can give them approval pending availability in the room, you know?
That's not a problem. The only thing, you know, we want to make sure that I think that we just embarrassed everyone that they're asking for, the food exception, that we just include that.
Can we, they say in the courtroom and the front lobby for registration and like refreshments, so we would have refreshments restricted to the?
To the lobby.
To the lobby.
And I think they're talking about water, coffee, and donuts, something that like, not anything, not a big spread of, you know, bucket, so.
Okay. Any questions?
So your phone?
Yeah, it's okay. Go ahead, go all the way over.
I'm still looking for the okay, and then we'll come back to you in a day, and all this, and everything. There's a long registration, they're going to start, now that they have approval, they can start the registration. I think they have to at least get two people to be able to put on the full extent of the seminar, so they're really hopeful that they'll get.
So, this next item is one that was precipitated by an email from Jim Winkowski. Jeff, I'm going to ask you to talk about this, but before you do that, I just wanted to follow up. Bob, you had mentioned, Mr. Gilbert is here in the audience, and we mentioned this in the public meeting, but you weren't here, but the $11 million in grants that you brought up were for seven beach communities. We did research those grants and why we didn't apply for them, and our town was not eligible for those two grants. So, we did, we did look into it, we did report back, but we put it at the public meeting, but you can respond.
Okay. When I talked to the gentleman down in North Wildwood, his name is Ron Simone, I have his phone number, and he went into it, he never said it had to do anything with the beach communities or nothing. The city administrator is?
I'm sorry, it was limited to this, to seven counties, and we were not one of them.
Seven counties?
Correct, that's what we were told, yes.
By whom?
By our engineer.
Wow. Like, again, I, this guy Ron Simone, he is like, him and Mr. Hatcher could be like cousins, because Mr. Hatcher's on the ball with almost everything that goes on around here, and this guy is like the same thing, he's like, he's amazing, I mean.
So could you, could you get his contact information, we can have our engineer reach it?
Yeah, his name is Ron Simone, I got him through the city administrator, but the city administrator wasn't in, so they contacted me with him. I got 609-522-6464, and his name is Ron Simone. He gave me a thing saying that it was a flood hazard risk deduction and something grant problem, and he made no mention that it was, had anything to do with the seven counties. And he gave me a thing called? And he gave me a thing called grants.gov. There's, I don't know what I'm doing on the computer, but the wife does, there's ninety-three pages on there, and we have no idea what we're looking for, 'cause we're amateurs, but there's ninety-three pages on grants.gov for every grant that you can apply for. But like I said, we don't know what we're looking for. But, I mean, he said that was a great help for them, and the project that they're doing down there is gonna be around eleven million dollars. They only have to pay one. The core is paying the other ten. So the core is paying more than, what, ninety percent? So...
So, since, since this is not part of, of the discussion, it was just because we talked about these shoreline grant applications, I wanted to bring it up. So we'll, we'll have the engineer reach out to Mr. Simone, or Jeff to reach out to Mr. Simone, and, and see what we can find out, but our professionals have told us that we weren't eligible.
Yeah, he said it hadn't, he didn't say it had anything to do with the streamline or anything like that. He just said it was a grant.
Understood.
Yeah. Flood hazard risk deduction and something grant problem, and flood risk resolution, New Jersey D E P. But, I mean, he'd be the man to talk to.
Understood. So we're gonna talk to him.
Okay.
Thanks, bud. Jeff, would you fill us in on the shoreline protection grant application?
Sure. The reason for this, I mean, we've applied for this in the past, and the reason to do this is to, number one, make it relevant from a times standpoint, is to update the cost estimates that are involved in it. The engineer would do that, and to submit it again. There's not a deadline, but what we've been doing is try to do it every couple of years so that they know that it's out there and is relevant. And that's what Jim recommends, is that we complete the, update the application, complete it and submit it, so that they know what's there, you know, that it's not a three, two-year-old grant application, and that's basically it.
Okay. So do we need to do anything in order to authorize him to resubmit that? Just a, a quick motion. Okay, so if I could have a motion to authorize our engineering firm to renew our shoreline protection grant application?
Sure.
In favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay, so, obviously, before we go into executive session, we'll go through our normal reports, and we'll start with our department heads and professionals. I'm gonna start with Jamie. Jamie has nothing for us. Chief, you have any report tonight? You're so good. Jeff, do you have anything for us this evening?
Um, just a couple things that just came up in the last day. First of all, we had a request from one of our employees, Joe Russell at the sewer plant. He's a den leader for the Lanko Scouts, and he has nineteen Weebloos, and he would like to, permission to bring them to the sewer plant for a tour of the facility. There's bags that they can get for touring that, and he wanted to do it on a Saturday afternoon at his own time, if you would approve that.
Any problem? He can take every safety precaution.
Sure. Certificate, and you take precautions, correct?
As a former Weeblo, do I have to recuse myself?
Never made it to Cubs, but...
Is that between Cub Scouts?
Has to be for Cub Scouts.
Has to be for, no for Cubs. I still know the Weeblo. I didn't get very far. Another item is that we've had an ongoing problem with the security camera out at Community Park, and the issue is that when, if you look at the camera, it looks like the person's a robot, because the speed isn't correct, and they've been playing around with it for months and months at their own cost. Originally, what was supposed to happen, it was supposed to be on our antenna, but when they put the, the receiver on our antenna, it interferes with Jerry's DPW communications. So what they found after all this time is that if they put it on the antenna of the Burlington County Building, which is right next to the park, it will resolve all of the problems. They've spoken to the county, and they're saying that county just wants a letter, with our letterhead, or questioning that we can put that antenna on there. So I just wanted to ask you guys if you would authorize me to write a letter to do that. The cameras work, but they're not, there's issues with, again, is somebody walks, you see them here, and you see them like four feet in front, and this will supposedly take care of all the problems. We've been kind of working it out with the chief and the contractor. We haven't paid him a dime, and it's been in since April. So he's been diligent about not wanting to lose our account, so this, we think, is gonna resolve the issue.
Great. So we, we okay to authorize Jeff's...
And then, the final item is, I just had a meeting yesterday with P S C and G, is gonna come in again, and I can put the information on the website, but I wanted to notify you all first, is that every couple of years, they come in and they have to do vegetation management around the trees that are in the wires, and they've, they're going to identify all the, actually, they did identify all the trees. I just got the email today, so I'll get a copy, I'll forward it to all of you, that lists the trees that are involved, that they're gonna have to do some trimming and cutting. They'll give residents an opportunity, if they don't, if they want the tree completely down, some people don't want their tree kind of butchered up, then most instances, they'll take the tree down. But I just got the information, and they're gonna, they'd like to come in in the next month or so. So I just sat with them yesterday, got the information. I'll get it out to all of you, but I want you to be aware of it, that they do come in every couple of years, and you do get some complaints, because some of the jobs they do, I mean, it's not pretty. And they're getting them out of the wires, and unfortunately, getting them out of the wires usually makes the trees look too bad.
And end up with like wide...
Yeah.
Because he doesn't have a legal opinion.
So that was it. I'll forward that to you. I'll scan it in and forward it to you right now.
Great. That's all I know. Anything?
Nothing, I understand.
Very good. So we'll go around the table as we usually do, and start with Dan. Dan, anything?
Yeah, the mayor had hoped to be here tonight, but he asked me to pass on. He had a procedure today, and he was a little under the weather. Other since, Chief's here, I know you received a letter from a resident of Somerville. I gave it again to Jeff tonight. I'm talking with Ken, he said we've talked about this once before, before I came on council, about parking on Somerville Drive. You can take a look at that, and we can discuss at some point in time.
Where did you, Jeff, number one?
You did, okay. And that's it.
Tyler, anything?
No report.
Michael?
No report.
Patty?
Just two quick things. The A A would like to have that May thirteenth as the opening day or celebration of the park, and they were wondering if the road could be closed, like we had planned last year, they're gonna start the parade at, they're gonna form at the Pizza Hut, and just come down Hartford Road into the park from about eight thirty to nine fifteen. They have, they have their meeting tomorrow, Thursday night, so I'll get more specifics for you then, but from last year, that's what we said we were gonna do, just from eight thirty to nine fifteen. And the kids would walk down to the park, and then go into the park with a little parade. That would be one of the things, if we could do that, I don't know. It was rained out, yes, and at this point, they don't have, because that's what I said, they don't have a rain date, and I think if this gets rained out, we're just not, not gonna do it ever again, you know, because we've been trying this for too long.
Somebody's trying this.
Yeah, it's, you know, but I think the kids would really like it, and I know, Jeff, you and Janet, all the signs are gonna be up, Bob's ordering the signs for all the various donors and things, and we did receive fifteen thousand dollars from ShopRite, and ShopRite wants to know in front of the snack bar, the thought, they, they want to name, that's the naming rights that they're gonna use, just in the A-frame, so that it would just be right up there, you know, the ShopRite donated by, or, you know, named for, not donated by, but, and they wanted to know, since it's not a very big sign, it would be small, in it, above the, would there be a possibility, could they put their name on another side of the building, like maybe front and back? And I said I would ask. And I, Bob will get me the artwork for the sign, but it won't be, you know, I think everything is so tastefully done down there, and that's what we would like to keep it, very classy and tastefully done. So that would be, if, if you wanna think about it, and then let us know. And they, like I said, the A-frame seems to be, I think Jerry, I don't know whether Bob talked to Jerry about that, too, and I know the consensus was last week when I showed you, or last time, when I showed you the slates for the honor, the wall of honor, most people didn't like putting it on a building, which I can understand. So my question to you was, do any of you have a suggestion of how we could put the wall of honor up? We're looking now, but if you have any suggestions, if you've seen anything like that done, separate and away from the building. Bob did say that he talked to the, the people that made the building, and they said if you just, if you put it on, and you needed to take it off, you could power wash the building. But I, I think the building looks so nice, maybe we should just leave it and find another place for the wall of honor, but I'm asking if anyone has suggestions. I know I saw like two stone pillars, and then like a big wooden board in between that we could put them on, and, you know, something like that, or somewhere in the front of the park, and that was just, you know, and obviously, that will, that's what we need.
You said these are for slate?
Yeah, they were the tiles, remember?
Yeah, how, how big are...
Um, what would it be? Three by six?
And approximately how many of them?
Well, right now, we have, I think, only four or five, but what they're going to do, instead of, you know, the banners hang all over the field, although they like them. The banners are two hundred and fifty dollars a year for people to buy. The ceramic slate, ceramic tile is five hundred dollars, and your name would be there forever. So it makes more sense, we thought, maybe to go ask the people what they prefer. They might want a banner as well, some people like the banners, and I know in the other parks, they want the banners, but maybe to put their name on the, the wall of honor. So if anybody has seen other parks or seen ideas, we would be open to any idea, so that we would keep it off the, you know, off...
We might wanna talk with Jake's Place and see, 'cause they have a number of opportunities like the, see what they're doing, and if, if they're gonna do something that's similar, then maybe we work in conjunction.
Okay.
That'd be separated, but that'd maybe be similar...
Yeah, they would be the same. I think Jake's Place is gonna do the walk.
The walk.
And Bob Kennedy did say that the, the A A sold their bricks, and they are gonna put a walkway in across, and he said that's gonna look, look nice, and then we'll stand it. And then one other thing, we, I was thinking, when I was down at the park, when you look at the, the black fencing, as you go into the snack bar, the black fencing, it falls short of maybe from the length of this room, that people can walk down that hill, down that grass, and it's just gonna be a mud pit. Would we be able to either extend, because the fence ends here, then there's, you know, this much grass down the hill, and then there's a pathway. Most people are not gonna walk down the pathway, they're gonna cut right through the grass. Could we put, either extend the fencing, or put hedges or something to keep them from walking?
I know we've, we've talked about the possibility of some hedges there. One of the things, when we went out and did a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago with the engineer, on some of the issues that we wanted to have addressed, you know, the points list items, Greg Valesi, and I'll have to remind him, we pointed that area out as a problem area, and asked for some suggestions, and he said he would provide a plan for that area at no cost. So I'll remind him that he made that promise.
Okay, great.
See if we can get him to update it.
All right.
And with, with a couple of those options, we told him that there would probably be a path there, you know, with the bricks, and incorporate that in there, and see where that goes, but I'll go on and ask him about that.
Okay. And the last thing, when I was out at the park, a woman stopped me, and I, you know, you didn't think of it, we have handicap parking places in front of Jake's Place, which obviously we will need them, but there is no handicap parking anywhere else. So one brand leader said, I can't get out of my, I can't get down to that field, because if she parks at the Jake's Place, she has to walk all the way up beyond the snack bar and then down to the fields. She said, would, would there be a possibility of maybe three or four, the first four handicap, the first four spots, could they be handicapped facing the field, you know, when you, when you come in? We have no handicap parking other than at Jake's Place, but nothing for our field. So I don't know, is that, is that illegal, a habitable? Who determines that?
The engineer, to make sure that they're in compliance with the regulations, touch base with it, and see if there's any...
I never thought of it until I was there, and it's, the handicaptor's so far away from where...
From the field.
From the field. So there are places where it would be very convenient, the first four spots, like facing the shed, the new shed.
I think, you know, we're gonna, because of the nature of Jake's Place and the, and the all-access field, we're likely to have more than state-required number of handicap spots, the need for that anyway, so we would...
Yeah, I'll double-check, see if we can accommodate it.
And one last thing.
Do we have a question from our...
No, it's just, it's a, it's a minimum requirement, that if we wanted to exceed the senior prerogative.
And one last thing, where the flagpole, it's just a grassy area there now, would, would we be able to ask the green team if they would like to put flowers there, or is that, again, does Jim, the engineers, have to, to do that? Just, we're just looking to...
The table plant for that?
No.
Doesn't fit.
The table is gonna go in, no, the table's gonna go where the, the big pole is in the middle of the four fields.
Right.
The plaque pole's up in the front, and it's...
Just so you know, Patty has it today, I've told it.
Eight foot, he's calling to see if there's a six foot. He's gonna try to, gonna try to get a six foot, and, and see if that fits, yes. But this, I'm just talking about the American, the flagpole with our American flag and the Del Ran flag. It's just a grassy area, would, would we be interested in having that fixed up a little bit, maybe made it look a little prettier?
You know, as long, if, if they're going to plan it, they'll...
Oh, give us a design.
Will they maintain it?
I'll ask them. But I wanted to know if anyone...
If they maintain it, I would like...
I'm thinking, what's about, you know, Public Works is gonna be cut long.
Yes.
They have to be weeding and seeding and feeding, that might be...
Or maybe they could come up with something very simplistic, I don't, I don't know. Okay.
So it's good to be...
All right, so is that all right to ask them?
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Jeff, we have, I discovered a wonderful telephone pole on Southview Drive that appears to be one half of a bridge that's going to be going over Southview Drive.
That's on your camera?
No, it's not my camera. No, it's pretty, and I have the number for it, too, I think it's nineteen twenty-nine.
That's average?
That's, no, that's the pole tag.
Oh, the pole pole, okay.
So it's, it's just, it leans, it's leaning about, I'm guessing it's about twelve or fourteen degrees right now, but it ain't, it ain't going in the right direction.
All right.
And I, right, and that's all I have tonight.
One other thing is just a reminder about the time capsule.
Right.
I didn't have my report for, yeah, twenty-nine to eleven.
Twenty-nine to eleven.
This, this Saturday at eleven o'clock in the morning will be an early one for me. And internally, for our council folks, the financial disclosure forms, Jamie was nice enough to send them out. All of us seem to be, understand the importance of that. I'll ask Jamie and Kathy, the secretary, board secretary for planning and zoning, to make sure that those members understand the importance of filing financial disclosure forms, and they are just, they are no big deep investigation, they just say, who do you work for? And that way, there's, there's no possibility of conflict of interest.
When do you have to be there?
Oh, May thirtieth, so you have to hurry.
Take me that long time? I'll come and talk to Jamie. Jamie and I will sit and do it.
No, on May thirtieth, there'll probably be about fifty, seventy-five.
I'll be there before that.
You guys will probably go on a file a bit.
So I, I need a motion to go into public?
I'll make that motion.
I, I...
I'm going real quick.
Motion carries, and we are in public meetings, so we typically go around the room, we ask everyone who's asleep, and we address the record.
I'm gonna ask them about, to, to make sure the engineer puts in a, it's a necessity. The gentleman of the green team, I know we have a lot of local tree service people.
Right.
If we can identify any of them that would be able to do this work, give the work, you know, they don't have to use them, they'll put it out there in the communication, and we give the work to a local business if they're qualified and able to do the work.
That's great. What I do?
I have one here. I have one here. And I finished my disclosure form today.
Already? Already? Wow. All right. Well, I can't tell.
No, I'm going to do it.
Bob?
Yeah, Bob Gilbert, 75 Stewart Avenue, Del Ran. I have a couple things that are going to be real quick. I want to make this public. I want to thank Home Depot of Del Ran that donated a toilet and all the fixings. We have 100... We have 100% disabled vet that lives around a corner from me, and he needed a new toilet, and they donated it. Myself and another neighbor down the street, we installed it last Saturday for him. So, I mean, they deserve the recognition that they donated that for a vet. I just want that out there. Number two, I'm not... I'm not trying to be a hardass here. When you go to the... Your engineer, and when he fills out the paperwork for the whatever, is there any way that he can put in there and emphasize that if the sewer plant goes in the creek, the whole town is in the crapper? I mean, really? We got nothing. I mean, I don't know how... I don't know how you can emphasize that on the application or whatever, but if that's... If that's... Yeah.
The sewer plant?
Yeah. If the sewer plant goes down, it's an old saying, "Huh, something and tattooed." And it needs... The bank needs to be restored. And that is pressing... The flooding is important to the houses, but for the whole town, if we don't have a sewer plant, we're in the dumper.
Bob, I'm sure that as a professional, you'll be prepared to state whatever needs to be said on that.
Yeah. Okay. As far as your park, I saw this in the paper, and I cut this one out. A concession stand and restrooms at Memorial Park and Mount Laurel are closer to reality. They got two payments, a total of $25,000 from a grant from Investors Foundation. I don't know if you know how to contact these people, but they donated $25,000 to a park in Mount Laurel.
Investors donated to us as well. They donated 2,500 so far, and I think they'll be donating more.
Yeah, because, I mean, they gave them two checks for 25 grand.
That's nice.
The only other thing, real quick, is I don't know how you guys do this, because[1632.32]